Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board Meeting for Monday, February 7, 2022. I am able to confirm that we have a quorum and able to proceed. So we will start with the confirmation of the or modification of the posted meeting agenda. I know of no changes, Jim, or anyone else. Is there anything that we have changed since we posted the agenda?
No changes that I'm aware of, Melanie.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the meeting notes. I see, I'm hoping that everybody has received the meeting notes from Jim and had a chance to look at them. Is there any, anyone wishing to make any changes?
I have a, just a couple of typos. Page 10, this is on Red Wing. Number two. It says, classifies the proposed action as type one seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. I think that's required instead of precluded. Am I wrong?
Nope, that would be required. I actually had it highlighted originally. Wanted to confirm with everyone who thought it was a type one. I'm confident that it is, but that would be environmental quality review was required. Yes.
Okay, then there's just a silly one on page 11, number four, where you're calling a slave lot a flat lot.
Thank you, Edna. I guess it's hard to catch everything in 24 pages of meeting notes. I say that, I say that for the public's benefit to know that the meeting notes that Jim puts together for us are very extensive and certainly go a long way toward helping us. So I applaud Jim for doing it and Edna, thanks for catching those errors. So could I have a motion to approve the meeting notes as corrected?
So moved, Edna.
Second. Was that Michael?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. You've all had a chance, I hope, to read the January 18 minutes in draft form. Are there any changes, corrections, additions?
I move that we accept them as they are.
Thank you, Edna. Could I have a second, please?
Second, Craig.
Thank you, Craig. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody. Correspondence and announcements. I do not have any correspondence to report on. I do have a couple of brief announcements. One, I'd like to rec, excuse me, recognize and welcome Craig Olsheski, who has joined the planning board. Thank you, Craig. Happy, happy to have you onboard.
Hi, Craig.
And in terms of announcements, I can say that we had a meeting this week or last week, I guess last week, several of us with the three remaining members of the Conservation Advisory Board. They are very eager to get caught up to speed and to add some new members to the Conservation Advisory Board. So we said that we would help spread the word that they are looking for new members. And the other thing that we will be working with them on, we've been discussing a, one of our training sessions for the year. Perhaps the first one in the spring date to be determined to focus on the conservation aspects of our job. We're going to be asking Jim to put together a presentation that will deal with all of the relevant aspects of the comprehensive plan and the zoning law that relate to environmental protections and conservation. And then we'll be looking for someone to present in the second part of the training session exactly what we all should be looking for as we conduct field visits relative to environmental issues. So I think many of us can use a brush up on this if we haven't had this training recently. And I think it will be very helpful to get the CAB up and running again. So we'll be putting together that training session and getting back to all of you in terms of when you might be available and how we can move it forward. Does everyone feel this would be a worthwhile training session?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, good. Then we'll proceed with that and try and get that under our belts. All right. And is there anything else under the business session that anyone would like to address? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move into the new application portion of the agenda for this evening. And the first up is Roger Tully, 1214 Old Primrose Hill Road, a minor conventional subdivision. And I believe Mark Graminsky is here to present for the Tullys. Is that correct?
That's correct. Good evening. It's Mark Graminsky. I'm here representing Roger Tully Productions LLC. The property is located on the, actually, on the north and south side of Old Primrose Hill Road. So the plan that's in front of you, it's actually on the left portion of the plan. I show the entire parcel, the entire parcel is 91, approximately 91.16 acres. It's a RC5 zone. And the purpose of this application, it's a proposed subdivision application to create a parcel on the east side of the, of the parent parcel. It's identified on the, on the panel to the left as lot number two. And that parcel size is 24.6 acres and that has been field surveyed. I am the engineer on the project, Mike Dalbo, surveyor in Hyde Park, has done the boundary survey work on the property. The balance of the property located to the west of lot number two is identified as lot number one. And that actually has, that property's not only on the west side of lot number two, it's also to the south. If you notice, there's a land hook on Old Primrose Hill Road. There's a small piece on the south side of Old Primrose Hill Road that's included in this parcel. So this application is fairly straightforward. It's, it's to create lot number two, a 24.6 acre piece for, for residential development. If you go to the, the right side of my drawing panel, number two, I show some more detail relative to that parcel. So there's site topography that's shown, obviously access would be off of Old Primrose Hill Road. Just initial site visit that when I was there with the surveyor. Access with access is shown. It's right at the apex of that curve of Old Primrose Hill Road. And then it's anticipated to enter into the parcel into the larger portion, portion of that parcel. You head in and over that first stone wall that you see through the, through the narrow section of this lot for development into the larger portion of the, of proposed lot number two. I've also identified, so along with topography, I've identified through Dutch County GIS, there are some ACOE wetlands, Army Corps wetlands located on the property. And, you know, specifically where Jim's highlighting right now, there's a, there's a wetland area there. And then appropriately, I've shown the 100-foot adjacent area associated with the town of Rhinebeck wetland ordinance. And also, if you just scan to the left on that larger, larger portion, which shows the entire parcel, I've, I've also identified, you know, wetlands that have been, that have been identified through the Dutch County GIS. So just in, in summary, just of creation of a, you know, a little more than a 24-acre piece for residential development.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Jim, I'd like to ask Jim to offer his comments at this time.
Thanks, Melody. Nothing too major. Took a look at this. I think everything is pretty much in order. The property is currently in Ag District 20. And so the applicant should just be aware that when they carve off this property and take some out of Ag District 20, there may be some implications with that. They'd have to talk with the county, possibly the town about any implications there. The property is historic, the larger property is historic. So I believe that they should go to HAPAC for review and comment. I don't think it'll have a major impact on anything, but I think they should take a look at it. And then, you know, obviously Mike, Mark pointed this out, their wetlands on the site, any development have to stay, should stay outside that 100-foot buffer and obviously have to stay outside the wetlands themselves. There are some stone walls on the property that I'm assuming are older, you know, stone walls dating back to the historic nature of the property. So just, you know, recommended the future property owner, when they develop, try and minimize any disturbance of those stone walls. And then finally, when someone comes in, they need Dutch County Department of Health approval for water and wastewater. But typically on sites this large, I think we are okay with just asking Marcus, the engineer, to sign off that he's confident that they could get that on this lot. That's all I have.
All right. Any other questions, questions, comments from planning board members?
I have a question.
Sure, Edna.
Going to be a fairly large lot. We're sure, I guess, that there is enough net buildable acreage to accommodate a residence?
Yes, I am.
Like there are a lot of hills and, and wetland.
Yeah, and I've actually, you know, I've walked the site and I feel, and I'll certainly provide, I can provide a document to the town. I feel it is, there's sufficient area and suitable for, you know, development of single-family residents.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the planning board wishing to comment or ask questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move to the procedural resolution, Jim, if you want to summarize that.
I can do that. Give me one second. Okay, draft procedural resolution for Roger Tully, minor conventional subdivision requiring site plan special use permit. Will accept the application supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board. Classify the action as type two. And schedule a public hearing for the application. On, it'd be March, the date, March 7.
March 7th at 6:45?
I know it'll be 6:15.
6:15. Correct, okay. Yep, yep. Still messed up. Got it, okay. Tell a gate planning board, who would like to make a site visit? Don't all rush to the front of their class.
Okay, please.
That's Delise.
I can do it, Melody, if we can do it this week or, or early next week.
Delise, is that workable, is that workable for Mark and Delise?
Mondays are, Mondays are actually ideal for me, if that's possible.
Yeah, I'm available next Monday.
So.
So it will be Delise and Edna, and I'll leave it to the three of you to work out the details of the time.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Jim, anything else with the procedural that we need to pay attention to?
We'll send it to the CAB. Again, I think it should go to HAPAC because it is a historic property. And go to the county because it requires site plan special use permit, but I don't think they'll have any comments on it. They typically don't for these subdivisions. And that'd be about it.
Okay.
We have to send it to the county for subdivision.
We don't typically, I'm sorry.
I know it's a site plan, but I don't think they like to see the subdivisions.
Okay, that, that's fine. I was going to clarify that actually with the county, because we've had a couple of these lately. So we will not send that to the county then. We'll make sure not to do that in the future.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? Thanks, Edna. I'll take a second from Sean. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, everybody. Let me just say upfront that we're, as many of you have noticed, we have a very full meeting agenda tonight. And we're moving into the portion of the agenda where a number of these folks coming in will have, you know, many things they want us to hear. I'm encouraging everyone that's presenting from here on out to keep their presentations to the minimum amount of time they need to allow for any clutch, any questions we have. So we can move through them smoothly and with great dispatch if we can. So next up is Teecourt Phase 2B, 195 River Road Miniature Train Central and Southern Loops. This is for site plan, special use permit and wetlands permit. And I think the presentation is going to be made by Howard and others, or just Howard?
Yeah, it'll just be me and Mark will fill in with any of the technical.
Okay, welcome, welcome. All right, Howard.
Okay. So I think all of you by this point have been familiar through our master plan application with the, the precedent on this property for this miniature train. Vincent Astor in the 40s and 50s built just such a train. This is a photograph from about 1945. Next, next slide. Just the, there's a small film that the, the board does have, if any of you are interested in looking at it. These are a couple of stills from that, that show Vincent's train. Go to the next one. This actually shows some of Vincent's trestles. These are wood trestles that go over the low depressions on the property. That's going to become relevant as we discuss our proposal. Next slide. This is actually the layout of Vincent's train in yellow. It started at the northern side of what they call the Central Park of Astro Courts and ran up to the, the lake that was on the dairy barn portion of the Astro property. Not in our control, that's another entity, but we have the southern portion of this layout. Interesting to see how Vincent's was laid out. Next slide. So this is our property and you can see in the, the dash rectangle, that is the location of the, of the train. Some in northern portion of Teahouse property. I think you all know, we own three properties, but this is all relevant just to the Teahouse property. Next slide. So this is our current layout. We're currently applying just for two phases. Remember in the master plan, we have five phases, northern loop, a western loop. And they spur off to the, to the Teahouse property that are not included in this. So this is about two-fifths of the, the, the total proposal for the train. And we're doing this in part, there's a couple of reasons for this. I think you can imagine that there aren't many contractors out in the world who have built this miniature train before. So I'm working through just the logistics of the economical way to build such a train. Takes a bit of time, a bit of effort, and we're doing just these two phases in order to work out all the kinks in that process and to make it as economically efficient as we possibly can. And I think our client also wants to be able to, to use this for a period of time to get a sense of how much they may enjoy using this and how much the guests may enjoy using it. So this may come back as further applications for the northern, western, and Teahouse spurs. But it also may just end with this application where, you know, we have to go through this process and to understand that and all those complexities. But I also think it's really important for the board to see these first two phases. Instead of approving the entire train in one swoop, you'll be able to see a smaller portion of it and then begin to, to understand the scale of it and its impact on the ground. And, and see what we believe is actually a relatively minimal impact on this property. So, so I think this is, this is a good thing for the board to see as well. Now, so what this application includes is really just the track. We have divided our applications for much of the work for upcoming Astro Courts into several applications. And you'll see on this plan that there are two buildings, the station house and the, the groundhouse and car barn in which all of the trains are stored. Those are on a separate application that has actually been submitted and will come to you in several weeks to show here for, for reference. So this application is solely about the track that's on the ground and trestles that support the, the train through, through the steep ridge. And so I, as I said, we believe that the scale of this train is, is, you know, it's very small on the ground. You can see that it follows, you know, a fairly curvy route throughout the property. The reason for that is not simply aesthetics, but to keep this track as level as possible as it moves through this, this varied terrain. The train with these very small engines can only navigate a change of grade of one to 1.6%. And that really is only a little bit more than an eighth of an inch per foot. So that's a very, very shallow grade. You know, on varied terrain like this, that's not an easy thing to accomplish. So, you know, that, that accounts for many of the twists and turns. The result of this also is that we are not doing significant excavation or bill to, to place this train. There is a relatively minor amount just immediately adjacent to the track throughout it, but it's not extensive and extending wide beyond the track itself. Now, for areas where the, the train drops off, you know, too steeply for us to do any kind of reasonable filming, we've had to put in trestles, not an unusual thing, trains of all scales. Next slide. This, this is from our engineer. This is one of the construction drawings for those trestles. And you can see that they're made out of steel members. We're choosing Corten steel to make this. These are in the form of what are called steel vents. They're not really like four-square towers. These are single uprights where there's two, two steel, long steel upright members with a lattice between them that, that keeps them supported. This is the, one of the most efficient ways to build such a thing. And also, I think it's important for the board, it causes the smallest impact on the ground because you have only two points where it hits the ground along each, each bent. Next slide. So this is the, the layout of the trestles. And you can see that the, the trestles are only in three locations and they're a relatively small part of the, the track itself. Next slide. Just this, the important thing about these, these technical details is you can see the helical piles that are in the upper left for most of the details here. Those are, those are directly driven into the ground by a small auger machine. They require no excavation. They don't disturb the ground in any significant way. And then on top of that is placed a, a concrete tie beam that is basically just set on grade. It's slightly buried in the ground, but it doesn't require significant excavation either. The reason to choose these is they're, they're, in one sense, they're economical. But also, this is the, the method that's used in a lot of sensitive environmental work. In wetlands, for instance, if you were to put in a, like a boardwalk for a lemon area, you would do that with helical tiles, so that you're not digging deep foundation and disturbing building up a lot of silt. So this shows a bit of the sensitivity that we're trying to take with, with the construction of this train. Next slide. Just a few more details on here, just so you know, we're, we're looking at this very, very carefully. One question came up during an earlier discussion during the planning board hearings about handrails on the, on the trestle itself. And on the left-hand detail there, you can see that there are handrails along all of these. We're taking safety into consideration here as well. Next slide. Okay, now these are some typical construction photographs. You can see that this is all, the, the track itself is made by very small machines. It has a very, very narrow impact on the ground. Through each of these photographs, you can see that the, the woods are immediately adjacent to this work. And they are not touched. We intend to follow this kind of construction method through this entire project. And you can also see in this that the, the impact on the ground of building a train like this is really not much different than building, say, a pathway. If it wasn't just a walking path, we would go through some similar efforts to stabilize it. So the train itself is not deeply impacting this, this site. Next slide. This is just to show how the train itself can come in close proximity of trees. And we do not need to take those trees out. We have no impact on them really whatsoever. Next slide. Similar photographs running through, a train of the scale running through trees. And also the image on the right shows a trestle running through a wooded area. And you can see that there's, it really didn't have any impact on those, on those woods. Now, this is a wooden trestle, so there's a bit more mass to it than our steel one. But I think the message is the same. You do not need to, to damage the woods in order to run a train like this through it. Next slide. This is similar issue here with the taller trestle running through the woods. Our design is a bit different than the trestle shown here, but the impact on the ground is really just the same. When you, when you look at that, that forest floor, you'd hardly know that any work was done there at all. Next slide. This actually is, is only shown to, because it has a similar type of trestle that we're using. You can see the steel operates with the access through that. That's very similar in scale to what we're proposing. Although our proposal is in Corten steel rather than painted black. That's, this, this one is. Next slide. Okay, so I just want to conclude by speaking to this project a bit in light of the, the cultural landscape report, which we were required to do for the master plan. And particularly taking some of the, 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 the language in the review by Charles Brimbaum of the cultural, from the Cultural Landscape Foundation. Charles was, was particularly clear and stated many, many times in this review that it was important for us to follow the standards of the Secretary, the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation of historic properties. Those are the guidelines that the Cultural Landscape Foundation uses for every, every kind of historic review that they encounter. And we've taken that, I think, quite seriously in the design of this, of this train. And we think that we've hit most of the Secretary of Interior's requirements, and in three in particular. The train is in the character of the historic precedent of the property. Vincent Astor had a train very similar to this. So this is not a new function brought to this property. It's one that has been here historically. Second, it causes no harm to the historic record on the property. We carefully ran this so that the, the, the track itself would run through what we know have always been wooded areas. No, no development of that, of that area on the property at all in the historic record. There are two fairly significant historic elements in this area. One is the Astor family pet cemetery. And the other is the site of the original carriage house for the, for the Astors. We purposely run this train around each of those, stayed well away from them so that we're causing absolutely no impact on them whatsoever. And then third, that this, this train can be removed at any point in time and the area restored to its pre-construction condition. There's nothing about building this that causes permanent damage to the property. So we can undo this at any time, which is, that's an actually an important element in the Secretary of Interior's standards. So with that, it's our presentation and Melody, I turn it back to you.
Hey, is there anything, Mark, you wish to add or is that complete the presentation? Okay, Jim.
Mark, you're muted. Yes, yep, I'm back. Yes, I, yep, I have nothing to add, Melody.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I believe you have some comments you'd like to make.
Yeah, a couple of comments. Again, you know, this is
Again, you know, this is the preliminary review, so I put some comments out there for the planning board's consideration. And obviously put them out there tonight. You know, first off, I think it's important to note that the, the concept is proposed at T Court, was approved by the planning board through a master plan that was approved back in July of 2019, not just for this, but for the entire site on the three properties. But we're, you know, just looking at this particular part of the application tonight. So I just wanted to note a few things. These are kind of high level discussions that came about, I think, in the, the previous discussion of the master plan and the site visits that occurred. And those were just, you know, I know Howard talked about how this is the minimal amount of disturbance, you know, with the, the proposed elements that can go in, particularly as it relates to the elevated portions of the track. But it seemed to me, you know, from my perspective, kind of listening into the meetings, that the disturbance may be a bit more than I think, you know, planning board members had anticipated back in the original discussions. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone took a look at, you know, what exactly is being proposed for the footings? You know, what's going to be necessary? But I also wanted to ask, you know, Howard and maybe Mark about, you know, the thoughts on how exactly these will be built. You know, you showed a picture of the tractor, you know, kind of going in there and grading the site. It just seemed to me that you're going to need something a little bigger than a tractor to make some of this happen, particularly the, the structures for the elevated portion further in. So I didn't know if you could speak to that, if you're planning on, you know, you're going to need larger temporary roads or if you're having any permanent kind of access roads into, to get to these if it needs maintenance in the future. And Howard, give me one second. And with that, the same kind of idea goes with emergency access. You know, should something ever happen, excuse me, are we going to be able to get emergency vehicles back in there? Or are we looking at the kind of situation where they might have to hike in, you know, on the track or something like that? And for that, I think you should reach out to the, you know, the town's emergency services to just kind of see what they have to say. But those are a couple of my original thoughts, but maybe I'll turn it over to you to, if you want to answer those quickly.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll take that in reverse order. The, as far as emergency access, this is not a densely wooded area. The, the trees are fairly separated from each other. And because of, you know, just, just like much of the northeast, Deager had eliminated the understory in this, on this property. So, so this vehicular access throughout, if one needed to get an emergency vehicle to any portion of this train, there'd be very little stopping them. So, so we're pretty confident that that's not a, not really going to be an issue. In terms of construction, we have been, as I said, we've been working with a number of contractors to figure out just the logistics of something like this. And by and large, everyone is pretty comfortable with the idea of following the track for most of its construction. Certainly in the, the on-grade portions of it, that's pretty easy to do. Because you are building it in a linear fashion. The, the trestles themselves do require a little bit more. But we've been working with a number of contractors who do a lot of work actually here in the city. And they're thinking of using what are called spider cranes. They're very lightweight, small machines with a lot of long, so hump rigor extensions that are very small in, in general size, but can actually lift significantly within a small area. And since we have the ability to get some of these, these cranes along this path close to the, to the trestles, we don't really see the need for a construction with, because most of them are, they're light enough that they could go over existing terrain and not cause damage. But the intention is to stay within the, the line of the track as much as we possibly can.
So I guess just to maybe to put a quick finer point on it, then I'll move on. You know, you provided this picture of the, the tractor here and, you know, the width. I think people can envision what that is. Do you think that's really what we're looking at for what the general width would be for these spider cranes to get in there? And the other, you know, equipment to, to put in the cement and everything else? Or do you think we're looking at something wider than that in general? I know maybe you can't speak to specifically yet, but.
Yeah, yeah, I can't tell you exactly immediately because these have been at a conversation level, but I can get that information of what, what is required for them. And I certainly present that to you.
I think that would be useful because, you know, one of the big points we had, you know, with the master plan was just the discussion of total disturbance, whether that's on the ground or in the ground. So I think, you know, the more information you can provide related to disturbance, the better, you know, when it comes to this. And including any, you know, big tree removal, things like that.
Actually, I should have mentioned the tree removal aspect of this. And Mark was, was good enough to, to stake this layout last month. And in reviewing that line, there actually are surprisingly few train trees to be removed. I would say probably not more than, than, than 12 to 20-ish trees above six inches in caliber. We were trying, we did this several times and laying out and designing it and adjusted accordingly once we encountered significant stands of trees. So we've really worked to minimize that tree removal. And then I think one of the reasons also to show you some of those earlier photographs is if we have to wiggle some of these season lines as, as we work, as we install the train and just shift it a couple of feet to, to avoid a tree, that's very doable in, in the installation of these trains. They've got that flexibility. So our intention is to, to not take down very many trees. And we can actually be specific about that number because we have this, this layout state concealed.
Okay, I think that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Melody.
No, I was just asking if you have more questions, Jim.
Well, I can just really quickly touch on my other points and maybe other members can, you know, kind of comment on, on my comments if they want. So, you know, another one I looked at Howard is the overall height of these. I think maybe they're a little higher than we had originally anticipated they were going to be. Some of them are 26 feet, looks like plus approximately another three feet worth of railing. I, I think these are considered an accessory structure and as such, a 20-foot height maximum is, is all that's permitted. So in addition to some of my thoughts and, and, you know, concerns about related to safety and emergency access to some of these accessory structures are only permitted to go 20 feet high. So as you have it, you know, submitted now, I think that you're above what is permitted in terms of total height for the structure that's going in.
Okay, I thought we were very clear in the master plan process that we were at those heights. So. I feel a little surprised.
It, I mean, it's, it's something we can discuss. I don't remember discussing the heights to that degree, but, but even so, it's still above the code, the code height. So again, as a concept in the master plan is one thing, but in the site plan review, you know, we get into the details. You know, the code's the code and that's what it says. So I mean, we, we can discuss this further, certainly. But that's one element that I found that I think we'll have to talk about. Last two are pretty simple. The first one is just, it'd be nice if we could have a copy of the agreement with the Jason property owner for the file showing that you have permission to go onto the property.
I actually included that, Jim.
Oh, was it in there?
Okay. Yeah, it is. It's, it follows, all those documents are at the end. I included all the easement agreements at the end, at the end of the application with the deeds.
All right, I guess I missed that. I apologize. So we can take that one off the list. And then the, the final comment I had, and this is something for you to think about is, given the, the size of this, the uniqueness of what's being proposed here, I think some type of dismantling plan might be something worth drafting. I don't know that it has to be super technical, but some type of write-up saying that should it cease to be used or, you know, there'd be some type of issue that there's some type of write-up saying that again, it'd be minimally invasive, you know, effort to go in and dismantle it, those types of things. Just so there's something documented in the file with this project stating how it's intended to be kind of taken down. And that's it for me, Melody.
Okay, I would open it up.
Follow up on just one, one of your, your points, Jim. Who determines if these are actually structures? What, 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 what the agency within the town makes the determination?
If you had a question about that, you need to go to the zoning administrator.
Okay.
We did spend some time, Howard, looking at it in terms of the definitions and feel somewhat confident in that, but you certainly have every right to go to the zoning administrator and ask for an interpretation. Okay, I will open it up now to other planning board members to offer comments or questions.
Melody, I have a couple of questions, I guess, possibly comments.
Okay, Michael.
Construction, particularly along the trestle areas, especially when we're going up, you know, 24 feet, things like that. Will there be some form of scaffolding, some sort of way of laying the tracks as you build these so you can get them up there? And I think you're going to need alongside the actual train track, some way to get equipment in there to do that. It also, I guess, is part of that same concern is getting emergency vehicles in there. One reason that you're going so high and having to do this is because the terrain is a little bit difficult. And I don't think if someone gets, the thing stops and it's up on 24 feet, you can't really expect emergency personnel to go in there with ladders to try and get in there with ladders to go up and get people out. If someone has a medical emergency, you've got to be able to get them quickly to an ambulance, something of that sort. So I think more thought has to be given to emergency access for if something should go wrong, it could go wrong. And I think the best way to do that possibly be to talk to the fire department, which is usually responsible for that, see what sort of equipment they have to be able to get into an area like this. It is a wooded area, it's fairly thickly wooded and the terrain can be quite rugged. And I don't think the planning board is going to feel comfortable approving a plan for something that could be potentially dangerous if there are not adequate facilities to evacuate people who might need help, medical attention, something of that sort. So I think you really do need to talk to the local fire department, which I think is the one responsible for the area there along River Road in terms of emergency response. I think that's critically important. And I think we are going to walk down the road of more detailed description of how this is going to be built, what sort of equipment will be going in there. Clearly a lot of 25, 26-foot tower of that sort to support a train that's going to be running with people on it is going to need some form of concrete base below it, something of that nature. How are we going to get the concrete in there, possibly pumping something like that? If you're going to go in with trucks, obviously you're going to need a very significant road in there. So I think what people will all be, our own comfort is exactly how this is going to be done. We really need a good description of the construction process, equipment that will be used and how it will be done.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Anything else?
I was, I was struck by how high the, the trestles are. I counted 14 over 22 feet, six over 26 feet. I think it's hard to argue that it will not have an impact on the environment. And when we looked at some of the photos, there's a difference between a high trestle if there's a hill right behind it, rather than having a trestle straddling two hills, you know, over a valley. It's almost like I would like to see illustrations of what, of what these high trestles or the highest trestle that are, trestles that are permitted are actually going to look like in, in the environment.
We do believe we gave a photograph in this presentation that was quite similar to that.
Okay, well, what I wanted to know.
This is exactly what those conditions are.
Yeah, I mean, that, that looks to me terribly, terribly high. The other thing, I'm looking at how high the people are sitting on the train with what will be a three-foot fence next to them. It just, it looks dangerous to me.
But this is not the fence that we would be using on our train. Ours will have much more horizontal components to it. And the drawing that was in this presentation was just a, a section through that. We'll show you an elevation of that that shows that it is a much more solid, not solid fence, but it has much more structure to it than what's in that photograph.
I have just one more question. The, the train can only handle one to 1.6% grade. Is there a reason why a train that has that limitation is being used that can't handle some, some hills?
That's because, that is because of the size of these. These are, is there a particular scale of seven and a quarter inch spacing between the, the rails? You can only put so, so large of an engine on that kind of track. So it only has so much power. You know, and that's particularly for steam operated engines. Some, as I understand it, some of the electric and diesel ones can, can go up slightly steeper slopes, but that's not unusual. Your, your general train locomotive, you know, the kind that hauls materials around this country generally don't go over 2%. That's the nature of trains.
Thank you, Howard. Anyone else from the planning board?
I just have a couple of questions. One, what is the like general expectation regarding maintenance? Like how frequently do maintenance vehicles need to be there? What is like, what does it take to maintain a train like this?
Most of, most of the, the maintenance of these things is actually done by a car on the rails itself that has all the necessary equipment on it. This is relatively small welding and just, just bolting kind of, kind of work. So no, there's no need to bring a large machine. Once, most of, most of the maintenance on these things generally is just cleaning up. It's because debris falls in the area and that can be done from the track itself as well.
Okay, um, thank you. Perhaps you, you said this, but maybe I missed it. What's the, what's the speed that it goes?
In general, the speed is about as fast as a, a fast walking pace. Really not much more than that. And I don't know what the miles per hour of that is, but it's been described to me as simply a brisk walking pace.
Okay, awesome. I totally agree with everything everyone said regarding the concerns, especially emergency access and the height of these trestles. You know, but I think those are, I think the only other question I would have is, I know that there's potential for expansion. It's unclear whether or not that will or will not happen. But I think any foresight that we can see towards the long-term plan of just how far this will go is always appreciated.
Well, that's, that's in the master plan. That is the full extent of what we would ever propose.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, the rest is, there are a lot of variables in that decision.
And anyone else? Well, given, so many of you know on the planning board, you don't know, Howard knows it, I know Mark does. We have had a change in representatives from CPL, which is our engineering consulting firm. We will obviously be referring this to them. And it's going to be my recommendation that we, as soon as possible, schedule an engineering workshop between you folks and our new engineers so that they can be oriented quickly to the overall project and more specifically to the engineering aspects of this particular application. So I think we'll do that as we do it, engineer to engineer workshop. Jim will reach out to you and reach out to CPL. And we'll see if we can get it going because we do have the questions to be resolved about the height. And if the height is fixed at 20 feet or under, then we're going to have to talk about how we resolve that. So if you're amenable to that, I, I think we'd like to get that on the schedule. We're not looking to slow down your project. We're just looking to get all of these engineering questions that I think are substantive and important addressed as soon as possible. Is that amenable to you?
Yes, understandable.
I said amenable. I'm glad it's understandable. I just hope it's amenable as well.
We will, we will work with you.
Okay, anything else, folks? Anything from the applicant, anything from the planning board? Okay, I would encourage my colleagues on the planning board. If you, in reviewing this, as you go forward and you review Jim's memos, don't hesitate to forward questions to us, get them directly to Jim and myself. And we'll make sure that they get factored into the discussions at the engineering workshop. Okay, I think we're at the point of a draft procedural resolution. Jim, do you want to summarize it?
Sure, draft procedure resolution, resolution, accepting the application and supporting documents for further review. We will classify this as a type two under seeker for which coordinated environmental review is precluded. Just as a note, it was done as a type one for the master plan. But each of these individual elements will be going under type two based on how the original seeker was done for the master plan. So we will classify it as type two and schedule it for March 7th, 2022 at 6:15 PM.
All right, planning board, at this point, are we wanting to send out two people? Or do we want to get something together for the full board if they're interested? Do people have opinions about that?
I know HAPAC's going to want to go.
Well, HAPAC will definitely want to go, CAB should definitely be going. Do we want to start with two planning board members and see where it goes from there? You're not helping me here, people.
Okay, this is.
Okay, this is Craig and I'm, I'm interested in, in, in being one of the two or one of the whole group, whatever the case may be.
Okay, Craig, thank you. Who would like to go with Craig initially?
I'll go with Craig.
Okay, Michael, thank you. Thank you. So let's start with that. And we'll stay in touch with you, Mark, regarding scheduling of the workshop so we can coordinate the scheduling of the site visit at the same time.
Great, thank you. And I'll also, I'll reach out to Craig and Michael to set up a site meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
And the rest, Jim?
Just the, the referrals that we're going to do, CAB, W A C, H A P A C and county planning.
Good. Okay.
Just one other thing, just for Gretchen, if you need more materials to provide those, for those referrals, just let me know.
Okay. Okay, so I could entertain a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution.
So moved.
Second, Edna, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Mark and Howard for keeping it crisp for us tonight. Look forward to seeing the work ahead.
Okay, thank you.
On ahead to our third new application of the evening is Red Wing two eighty six White Schoolhouse Road, mining scale and scale house driveway, site plan and special use permit. I'm not sure who's representing Red Wing this evening.
Melody, before we begin.
Yes.
I'd just like to let everyone know that I will be recusing myself on this review of this application. There is currently a stop work order, a violation.
You got your, what did you say? The second thing I missed it.
We have someone, excuse me, someone is in the background. I don't think it's you, Michael, so.
No, I just took care of that melody. I apologize.
And I'm going to recuse myself since I am the interim zoning enforcement officer for the town at this time. And it will be up to me to determine when to lift the stop work order and to clear the violation. Therefore, in fairness to the applicant, I don't feel I should also be in a position to determine the, to evaluate the application and whether it should be accepted or not. So I will be recusing myself from participating as a member of the planning board, although I will be participating as a private citizen during the public hearing portion of the, of the review.
Okay, so the record will, the minutes will reflect that Michael has recused himself. Thank you, Michael. Okay, again, who is representing Red Wing this evening? Do we have anyone here representing Red Wing this evening?
Yeah, I, I'm the attorney, but Paul Greggs is going to be giving the presentation. I see that Paul is on. Yeah, this is Paul Greggs from Greggs Land Consulting Geologists and Engineers P C.
Okay, Paul, take it away.
Okay, this is the, the mine and the proposed access road is located on the west side of White Schoolhouse Road between to the north of Slate's, Slate Quarry Road. The, the mine has been in operation since the late nineteen eighties. And up until two thousand and thirteen, the, there was an access road from the northern part of the property going east to White Schoolhouse Road. That former access road was on land owned by the Lebowski family. And they, that was leased to Red Wing. The lease was ended and Red Wing since two thousand and thirteen has been getting the approvals necessary to put the access road in at the current proposed location, which is roughly one half mile further south than the former access road. The drawing you're looking at right now shows the, some details of the access road where it intersects White Schoolhouse Road. There'll be, the first four hundred feet of the road will be a blacktop paved. It'll be a gate about a hundred feet in from the, the, the road. That will be locked when the mine is not in operation. The road will be graded back so that graded gently from the edge of White Schoolhouse Road back towards the mine to direct water internally. There'll be some minor grading work over the, the vast majority of the length of this road. You know, there will be perimeter along each side of the road. There will be ditches to intercept any runoff off the road. And then the, the ditches will direct the water from the road, parallel to the road. And it will, the water will be directed to two natural basins. One just south of the east-west portion of the road and one which would be at the northern end of the road where it, near where it intersects the, the mine area. The mine is thirty eight acres in size. It's been approved, you know, for, by D E C for over, I think, since two thousand and nine. And, you know, we haven't been mining in that area because we don't, we did not have an approved access road. But we are now seeking to put this access road in while we're putting the access road in. Red Wing, the client would also like to put in a scale and a scale house to weigh the material and for the workers at the site to have, you know, the computers and a workroom and lunchroom and so on. As the, the, the long gap between when we were last before the board back in two thousand and thirteen and today was a result of, you know, ongoing legal battles between the town and Red Wing. And also the you know, the long drawn out process of getting the, all the reviews done by D E C. D E C has issued a mining permit to allow use of the, of the access road. We are now seeking to get the approval from the town looking for driveway permit, site plan and the special use permit for this mine, for the mine and the access road. As part of the environmental review, this was subjected to, by D E C. This was subjected to you know, extensive environmental reviews. You know, the, the mine in the past has been the subject of noise studies, visual studies, archaeological, cultural resources studies, wetland studies, stormwater studies and so forth. These studies were updated to include the, the road as well. And the type one, it was a, you know, type one action under seeker by D E C. Permit was issued in February of two thousand and twenty one. Some of the, a great deal of the, the studies that were involved in permitting the road involved, you know, the Blending's Turtle. There are wetlands, D E C regulated wetlands to the north of the road and also to the south of the road. These are R C twenty five and R C thirty, R C thirty to the south. The road stays more than a hundred feet away from the wetlands. And in fact, the location of the road follows, for the most part, the path of an existing unpaved field road, farm road that provides access to the, the interior of the property. It's primarily been used by the farmer and the landowner to, you know, get to the backside of the mine over the years. This, this road, the road that we're proposing diverges slightly from the the existing road. We tried to keep it as short and direct as possible. We also tried to move it away from the wetlands so that water from the, the road would not be directed towards the wetland. It would be directed into the interior of the property. Some of the, you know, there's been some extensive studies being, been done for the site on the Blending's Turtle. The Blending's Turtle does migrate between the two wetlands to the north and south of the road. Therefore, D E C is required that we put up you know, turtle fences so that if the turtle comes to the road, it doesn't go on, on to, across the road and potentially be run over. They've also been required to put in underpasses to allow the turtle to get underneath the road. We've got to educate, you know, drivers. We have to put in enhanced areas where the turtle might go to lay their eggs. We've put a conservation easement that's been filed on the deed for the parts of the, the, mainly the eastern parts of the, the mine area outside of the, the houses. There are two houses, two lots along White Schoolhouse Road. Those are exempted from it. But the field in the southeast part of the property and then the hill and the, the wooded area to the north of the access road, just west of White Schoolhouse Road. Those areas are part of the conservation easement as are the D E C wetlands. The hill house will be, you know, one story tall and kind of like a single white trailer. And, you know, they will have a scale house there, the clerk, the scale clerk there. You know, the, inside the building, there'll be, you know, changing room and a, you know, bathrooms for the, for the employees, lunchroom, break room for the, the employees. The scale will be built, you know, in grade or just above grade for trucks coming in and out of the site to be weighed, you know, weighed empty and then wait as they come out with the load. The the mining area is in the northwest part of the property. It covers thirty eight acres. The, the road itself and the associated drainage and grading areas and the areas for the scale and the scale house over approximately not quite five acres. I think it was four point five acres on the maps. We've rounded that to five acres. Most of the, of this, the sand and gravel that remains in the thirty eight acre permitted excavation area, most of it remains in a nine acre area. That's below water. It's in the southeast part of that thirty eight, southwest part of the thirty eight acres. They, they intend to mine approximately thirty feet below water table and process the material on site. And the processed and material will be hauled out by trucks using the access road. When the mine is, as part of the D E C mining permit, we are also required to reclaim the site. The above water areas, the side slopes will be graded to one vertical, no steeper than one vertical on two horizontal. There are several areas of the mine that have already been reclaimed. It's typical in most Santa Grava mines that they never go as steep as one on two. But the mining, state mining law does allow them to go that steep. Most of the above water reserves have already been mined out. And some, a good portion of the mine site has been reclaimed. The reclamation for the below water area will be a, a pond. The pond will have sholing areas in it to allow, you know, for more productivity on the reclaimed mine. And the water will be groundwater, the water in the pond is groundwater fed. You know, the mine itself, the mined area is surrounded on all sides by a mine face, graded slopes. So the, the activities are well screened from surrounding properties. There will be where the proposed access road, you know, enters into the mine area on the southeast side of the thirty eight acre mine area. There will be a ramp that drops down at a slope of a grade of no more than ten percent, between eight and ten percent to, for the trucks to access the top of the mine face down to the mine floor where the excavation will occur. Hey, that's a quick and dirty description of the project. Any questions?
I'll ask Jim to offer his comments at this point.
Okay, thanks, Melody. Hi, Paul. Have a bunch of questions and kind of some comments and just thoughts I'm putting out there as a town planning consultant. First one, I didn't see in the application materials we had. And if they're there, then, you know, we can reconcile all this later, certainly. I didn't see the, the D E C permit type materials. I think we'd like to have that for the file. I know some planning board members would like to take a look at that and I would as well. But I had a question about one comment you made a little early. You said, I think you said D E C, put this out there as a type one action. My understanding was it was unlisted. Could you confirm?
My recollection was that it was a type one action, but I, I will check my records. I have, I'm sixty one years old and my memory isn't what it used to be.
Okay, well, yep, if you can take a look and confirm that again, the, the D E C info, you know, if you can submit that would probably let us know.
Sorry, Jim, John Lyons. Can I just ask you a question about this? So when, Mr. Greggs, when we're talking about type one action, are you referring to D E C's review of the access road application or the review of the application to mine, you know, to do additional mining in the thirty eight acre area?
I was talking about the, the access road. Okay. I don't. The thirty eight acre D E C permitted excavation area was permitted quite a while ago. And I don't, you know, at one point, I know some of it was type one action. I don't know if the last modification, the nine acres below water, I don't remember whether that was type one or not.
Okay, with regard to the access road, what was the D E C's determination of significance?
They issued the permit, so they determined there was no significant environmental impact.
So they issued a negative declaration. There wasn't an E A S that was done in connection with this?
That's correct.
Okay, is the neg deck in the application materials?
The permit was included in there. I don't think I included the negative declaration, but the, the permit was included in there.
Okay, if you could include a copy of the, of the neg deck and with the materials that you're going to be supplying after tonight, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I will look for it and send it over to Gretchen.
Thank you.
No, John, before you go offline, that, there's a reason for my question. And the reason being is that I was proposing that the planning board would classify their review of this project as type one under seeker. I believe that the town can do that. It meets a class one classifications. Is that proper? And under your understanding, it's, it's an issue for the procedure resolution.
Yeah, I, I think I would prefer to get the secret documentation from the applicant. And let's take a look at that. We can act on the classification at the next meeting. Is that all right?
Okay, if, yep, if that, if that works for you, then we will, we'll put in here that we'll classify the action at the public hearing and the, in our procedural.
Okay, anything else, John? Jim, did you have some additional comments? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'll try and run through them pretty quickly, Melody. So what you see up on the screen here was the only sheet that I saw in the application for review. I think that we should have a full plan sheet that shows the entire site in terms of what's going on and then how this, this fits into that. So it would show us the details of the area that's being mined, details related to construction, not only of, of the road here, but also of the scale house and the scale. I think those all need to be provided for review since that is part of the, the review for the planning board. And again, this review is, is also being done under the purview of, of the process that the applicant's already gone through with the Z B A and the Z B A resolution that came about earlier this year. I also just wanted to make a couple of comments and thoughts for the planning board as, as we get into the review. That given the sensitive nature of portions of the site. That given the sensitive nature of portions of the site. And the amount of disturbance proposed, the planning board might want to request a habitat study be commissioned per town code section one twenty five fifty nine. Given the turtle fencing, turtle underpass and the previous discussion about the blending turtle in the area, which we know is protected. Obviously, you know, Paul said there was a lot of paperwork that was done for DEC. So if we can get copies of those, that might help with the habitat study would be something under town code. Also recommending the planning board consider a traffic study that details the operations and potential impacts on the roads. You know, at the driveway and in close proximity, obviously coordination with the town highway department. And maybe even talking with county highway and Nice dot to see if they have any issues or concerns on any roads that are in close proximity or getting any input from them. Finally. I'd recommend the planning board do a site visit as the entire planning board, so that everyone can get out and take a look at the site. And, you know, obviously familiarize ourselves with section one twenty five sixty eight FF of the code, which is the mining section. So primarily, I think we're looking for some more information to be provided as as part of the application as we move forward.
So I take it from what you're saying that you're comfortable accepting it tonight, but that you're laying out there some additional information that we feel needs to be forthcoming, is that correct?
Yep, that summarizes it, we had the application materials, we do have this this sheet, but I do believe we can use some more information. To help with the reviewers and what follow.
Okay, we did submit all the the paperwork for the access road, all the plans showing the entire site of the mining and reclamation plan map that was submitted to Gretchen. You know, we that's nineteen separate documents that were submitted. Cover letters to DEC, the mining plan map, three sheets of the mining plan map, three sheets of the reclamation plan map. Letters from Red Wings Attorney to DEC clarifying some issues, copy of the mining permit. Copy of the incidental take permit that was issued by DEC. Attachments to the mining permit and the incidental take permit such as Blandings Turtle guideline, backyard Blandings Turtle Conservation Recommended Mitigation for the Blandings Turtle. You know, Met Red Wing Reinbeck Blandings Turtle. Training attachment, public response comment letters when DEC. You know, we're going through the review process, DEC did send it out to public comment and we responded to those public comments. Cover letter and the incidental take report regulating related to the incidental take permit that was, you know, done so that that would be at least a part of what you're talking about for habitat studies. Short EF, long EF, and actually there was an E long EF done also. OPRHP letter of no significance. And the mining permit application form, so there's a quite a bit there. You know, I I thought Gretchen would distribute it to you guys. But it appears that it hasn't been done.
So Paul, I I did I did download what I got is the electronic submission file, it did have a folder labeled New York State DEC submissions and permits for access road, but I didn't have any files in there, maybe it was just a transmission issue or something. We can reconcile that, but I just didn't have it through review, so we'll catch up with you and make sure we have all that that paperwork.
What I'd like to do is, you know, ask Jim to follow up on that and John. If you and Jim can confer and make sure that we've got everything from Paul that we need. I'm sure it's there, I'm sure it's obtainable. But Paul, they'll be your point person on figuring out, you know, what that we make sure we get everything we want to look at.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yep, and we have just regarding the traffic study, we have I just looked at a draft of the traffic study but done by our traffic engineer, so that will be forthcoming shortly, we didn't have it prepared back in January, they were they were still collecting data and so forth. The traffic study, Jim, for your information for the members of the planning board. This is an update of the traffic study that had previously been done, it was done in two thousand and seven, so was deemed a bit long in the tooth, so they updated it with current data and projections.
Okay.
That that sounds good, if we can get you'll get all that information, like I said, maybe it was just a technical glitch, like I said, the folder was there, but didn't have anything in it. We'll get that all reconciled. And we'll get that thing.
Questions from other members of the planning board?
Oh.
Comments?
I have another question for Mr. Greg's melody, it's okay.
Sure, John.
Mr. Greggs, will the traffic study contain information about projected vehicle volumes to and from the site and also specify the kinds of vehicles that will be going in and out?
Yes, it does, it also includes site distance analysis, structural analysis of White School House Road. Intersection analysis of Slate Quarry Road to the south and Route three three oh eight to the north, which are the two intersecting roads. The trucks would use. Leaving the site.
Thank you.
What's what's your timeline on that, Paul? When do you think that might be available?
I expect in the next few days, you know, all of our, all of the lawyer and the applicant and myself had provided the comments to the the traffic engineer, so I don't, they weren't extensive changes, so I don't imagine that it'll take that long for him to turn that around.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question, how do we, what what study or how do we measure the the sound volume of the operation itself?
The sound volume was measured, the impacts of the sound was assessed as part of the DEC review process for the the thirty eight acre mine area. The pro the report basically measured ambient sound levels in the community at nearby receptors. And modeled this, you know, the sound levels of equipment that would be operated in the mine and DEC has a noise policy, the noise policy requires that to to avoid significant environmental impacts for noise that the sound level increases as a result of the mining not go up by cause the ambient to go up by more than five to six decibels. We were well within those limits on all of the all of the nearby receptors. Most of the receptors to the site are along White School House Road to the, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but to the west, there's a big hill. And the nearest houses on that side are on the other side of the hill. So most of the the focus of that was along the along the west side, particularly the west side of White School House Road. Most of the houses that are near are located to the north of the north and northeast of the mine area. And then there's also houses. There is a couple of houses down or one house actually down near the where the access road will intersect White School House Road.
So so to simplify that, that basically means there's those houses conceptually won't hear it, right, like to to adopt everything you just said in simple term.
That's that's a misconception, actually, in the noise and noise impacts. Noise, you know, you can hear noises that are up to thirty decibels wider than ambient. For example, if you imagine yourself at your house, you, if you listen carefully, you can hear traffic in the distance, but it's generally not a problem because it, you know, it's 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 fairly faint, so the mine equipment, you know, the DEC noise policy requires you know, no more than a five decibel increase, I would say certainly there are most of the receptors. The residents around the area wouldn't hear the mine at all. But there are some, I think, where we would have, you know, increases of two to three decibels and they would hear some mine equipment there, it just wouldn't be particularly loud. To give you a sense of you know, what a significant sound level is, a change of zero to three decibels is considered to be barely barely perceptible. So those are the kinds of increases that we are looking at here.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else from the planning board? Jim, John, we're all set then, I guess, right? So I think we're ready to look at the draft procedural resolution. Jim?
So draft procedure resolution for site plan, special use permit. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board. We will classify this proposed action at the next meeting at the public hearing. Upon my working with John Lyons to determine the proper path forward. I think it's class one type one, but we'll work on that, so we will classify it at the next meeting and schedule a public hearing on the application from March seventh, twenty twenty two at six fifteen. And who I think I had recommended we do a site visit with all planning board members, does that sound like a good idea, does everyone agree?
I I think it's a good idea, and so perhaps we'll say that here and then ask you to work with the applicant to identify some potential dates where the site visit can take place.
I can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
And we refer to this.
I just wanted to mention that the deadline for additional materials is February twenty second for March seventh, in case the applicant doesn't feel that's enough time before we definitely schedule the public hearing.
Yeah, the only thing that's not in my control would be the traffic study. Everything else that has been requested is certainly no problem to get in by then, and I really don't think it will be an issue to get the traffic study to you by then.
Well, as long as you understand that if it's not in, we won't be able to proceed.
Yep, no, that's, I understand that.
Okay.
All right, then the remainder of the procedure resolution is that we will submit this to the CAB for review as well as Dutchess County Planning Department.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution as? Thank you, Edna, second, the lease, all those in favor. Extensions, thank you, everyone.
We need to note that we need to know Michael, Michael is accused, just want to note that for the record with the
Correct.
With the resolution.
Can I ask a question before you leave this, should the resolution be including the highway, the town of Rhinebeck Highway Department as referral agency?
We we typically would send us the highway just out of a matter of, you know, referral, non official referrals, it's not a board or an agency, but yes, it will go to the town, town highway.
Okay, okay, and then I have one other question, if I may. Is has a provision been made for making the documents in connection with this application available to the public electronically through posting on a website, are they going to be posted on the town website or is there another website?
It will be on the planning board page of the town website now that the public hearing scheduled. I'll get them up in the next day or two.
Super, thank you, Gretchen.
Okay, I think you had a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, the motion carries, thank you, everyone. We're now going to transition into the public hearing portion of our meeting this evening. And I'm going to ask Jim to put up quickly sort of our rules of engagement for public hearings. And and so, you know, if you wish to speak at the public hearing, we ask you raise your hand using the tool in the Zoom or on your screen. When asked for comment, please state your name and address for the record. We're asking people to limit their asking of questions and comments to five minutes. If you're approaching five minutes or looking to exceed it, we will give you a little warning. Please provide only new comments, if you've noted an issue previously or heard it previously. The planning board has taken it under advisement and will continue to do so, and lastly, question should be directed to the planning board and an applicant's representative only. So that being said, because some of these have a lot of interest on the part of the public, we'll move into the first one. Which is the public hearing for Scott Lyons, six nine six one route nine minor subdivision. This has been represented by Marie in the past, Marie, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
Hello, Marie, how are you?
I'm good, thanks, how are you?
Good, so do you want to give us an update on this application?
Sure, and for the benefit of people who haven't been to one of our public hearings for this particular project, it's a two lot subdivision of a property on the north, what north northerly side of Route nine, north of the Route nine G and Route nine intersection. We're doing a two lot subdivision. Some of the lands are impacted by wetland, some of the lands are impacted by flood zone. So we're limited to two lots where we can get enough area that's high and dry outside of either of those two limits. There's an existing house on the larger lot, lot one A, which is a proposed fifteen point five nine two acre parcel. And the other parcel is currently vacant, and that's for proposed new construction. The two lots will use a shared driveway. And the utilities will run in the easement for the driveway for the two parcels. We are currently very close to getting a board of health approval for both lots. The existing house was never board of health approved when that house was constructed. And the vacant lot will need a board of health approval to be built upon. So are the latest comments from the health department were received or mailed out on the first of February. And they were mostly just housekeeping with a couple of comments for the engineer to address, a couple of comments for the surveyor to address, and that's, I guess, my presentation for now until you have questions.
Okay, I I think the minute should probably reflect that Michael has rejoined the meeting, just so we're clear about that, sorry to put that on you, Marie. So Jim, any comments that you'd like to make at this time?
I I have no new comments from, you know, the previous discussions we've had, really, it's just been getting the discussion of the county health department items in order.
Okay. Planning board members, questions?
I have a question that comes from Jim's minutes, he's talking about the ten point five acre lot. He says only four acres is stated as being high and dry. Excuse me, so the question is, is there enough net buildable acreage on that parcel to build a house?
Marie?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was asking the planner. Oh, absolutely, that's why we're going through planning, health department approval. And I did ask the engineer to send, because he just got this letter recently, I asked him to send it directly to Michael as zoning administrator, I don't know if Michael got it or not. I didn't have, I I did actually have copies of the engineering drawing and I could have forwarded them on. Yeah, no, they're definitely, health department is, as I say, they're close to approving this, so close, in fact, that one of their comments is that the planning board should, not that they should, the the two options are to submit all four drawings for submission and approval or submit my drawing with a letter from the engineer stating that it is approvable, get it signed for permission to file. And then file it, and then the health department will approve the subdivision, approve the the two septic systems. In the past, we've talked about whether or not we could get the planning board to give you know, approval with with a letter from the engineer stating that it could be approved. And up until now, we've said no, but that's one of the comments that the health department has actually made is that you know, and and because we're this close, I'm hoping that we would be able to get this signed with permission to file on my drawing, and then the health department will approve the the two lots for for water sewer. You know, design.
Other questions from?
I'm not sure that answered my question.
I think I answered it at the very beginning where I said absolutely, the the health department has four acres is a big piece of land. And there's no reason why you couldn't get a a house well and septic on an acre of that land. Certainly is not going to take up four acres of that land. And the requirement in this particular zone is that two third, two thirds of a lot of a minimum size has to be high and dry, so we meet that requirement.
Does that answer your question, Edna?
Well, I think the requirement Well, I think the requirement is that there is at least five acres of what's called net buildable acreage, which rules out wetlands and buffers and steep slopes.
But for the minimum lot size, and the minimum lot size in this area is five acres. So we have four acres that's high and dry. That's more than 75% of the minimum lot size.
Okay.
Well, I'm not okay. I think we're talking past each other. I don't know, Jim, can you help me with this?
I would have to find the exact language in the code. I know we've talked about this before.
Yeah, that's, that's why we showed that at least, at least four acres was fine, right? Because we had to have an, as I said, I believe it's 75% of the minimum lot size has to be considered high and dry. So if the minimum lot size is five acres, then three and three quarters acres would have to be high and dry, and we have four. If it became an issue, we could modify the lot lines, but I, I believe that this was not an issue in the past, and I would hate to do that this late in the game, start changing lot lines. Certainly, as I mentioned, the Health Department doesn't have any problem with approving a water supply sanitary sewage system with an expansion area, 100% expansion area and the house site and that four acre area.
While Jim is looking, are there any comments or questions from other members of the planning board? Well, I think we're back to the question we've always had, Marie, we just, when do we move ahead with this, right? I'm open to comments and suggestions from other planning board members.
Melody, Dave Pearson called me the other day, wondering exactly how we are moving forward. And I think from my discussion with Dave, as I understand it, the, the problem is the existing house and the septic system, which apparently was never approved by the by the, by the Department of Health. And I think what Dave is looking for is for the engineer for both sites, just to be able to, you know, sign off on saying that, yes, indeed, water and sewer can both be accommodated on both of these lots, because what we're basically doing is we're creating two residential lots out of one. So in creating a new lot, we have to ensure that it's buildable, which means it has to be able to have proper septic and water in areas which are not served by public facilities, which this area is not. So I think Dave has been in conversation with the engineer, what he needs so that he can move forward on, on this.
Okay.
So I believe it's between, I believe the engineer and Dave are trying to work this out. My last conversation, this was last week. I don't know if things have moved forward or not. I don't know if there's been any, any.
It sounds to me as if a continuation of the public hearing is in order.
Well, unfortunately, the, the letter from the, from Dave Pearson to Chris DiShiaro was the engineer on the project, has about five housekeeping items, two questions regarding the engineering proved, and I know you don't have a copy of this letter, and I, I, as I say, I tried to get.
That's a problem. Yeah, I wish we had that, Marie, because we, you know, that would have been helpful this evening.
Yeah. I, I thought he was going to send it to Michael. I thought Michael would have had it by now, but.
I've received nothing from Dave, no, no, nothing, just questions on the phone.
That came in. Late with the mail today.
The letter, we're, we're referencing the letter from the engineer?
Yes.
Okay, so we just received it today.
Okay, that's why I say, I think the storm probably held things up.
Well, you know, we, we do like to have new information at least two weeks in advance of the meeting.
But as I say, the letter was only addressed May 1st of February from Dave Pearson. So I, so I guess.
Unless anyone, right, unless anyone has a strong objection, I would recommend that we continue the public hearing to next month until we have all this information nailed down.
And if you look at the draft resolution that was sent out today, it just did say that it required the letter from the engineer stating that the design was approvable. It didn't say that it required Board of Health approval.
Okay, well, I, I just made my comment, so I'm waiting for my colleagues to weigh in.
Yeah, Marie, that, but that draft was drafted under the assumption of what we've been discussing previously, that we'd get approval from the county.
The problem is, the county says they won't approve it unless a map is filed. It's kind of a catch 22.
Okay, so, so what I said now is a draft resolution, and it was under that assumption. Certainly, if something were to change, the planning board members have every right to, you know, change that resolution now before it gets finalized, but that's why it was written the way it was. It's under that assumption previously. The, the net density discussion goes, I can't find it off the top of my head right now, searching through this. So if we want to address that question, I'm, I'm going to have to go back through the code and look at it in more detail, just to be able to identify the exact section. I just can't do it off the top of my head right now online.
Okay, well, I, I don't think you should have to. I think Edna's question is, it's important we resolve that. So I'm opening it up to other board members to entertain how we want to proceed. You have my thoughts.
I understand the applicant's desire not, not to postpone, but I honestly think in this case we should.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I would like to move that we do carry over the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second, Sean.
Sean, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gretchen, can you give us the time and date for?
6:15.
So we have a motion to continue the public hearing on the date and time that Gretchen just said. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion for continuation carries. Sorry, Marie, we really do want to.
I understand. One quick question. Am I going to have to be behind Red Wing and the public hearing, the, the two public hearings for the discussion, like the, the other one down at T Court? Or because mine's already a public hearing, carrying over, will I be before them? Because I know that they're going to be extensive.
Really? So, so I think Gretchen, do you schedule these as the new information comes in?
Generally, we look at them and, and guestimate the length and try and do it that way. So it's fair to everybody, so they're not sitting there for three hours for a five minute presentation. So this will most likely be one of the first ones for that night.
I appreciate that.
And are we anticipating a number of new applications at the next meeting?
Actually, the agenda for March 7th for new applications is closed.
Are there new applications?
There's one, and it's one of the KPH2 ones.
Okay, so Marie, there's only one new application coming in that should move it ahead a little bit as well.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do our, we'll do our best to get you in and out. And you do your best to get that other stuff to us, okay?
As, as Gretchen said, it's there.
Okay, good.
Hopefully you'll be able to review it soon.
All right, on our end, we'll commit to doing that. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you. Yeah, good night.
Take care.
Okay, moving ahead to the second public hearing this evening, Susan Ferris, 45 Primrose Hill Road, Minor Subdivision Lot Line Alteration. Mark Graminsky is here representing Susan Ferris, I believe.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mark Graminsky, representing Susan Ferris on a lot line alteration. The property is located on the north side of Primrose Hill Road. That's a Dutchess County Highway, Dutchess County Route number 84. There are, there are two parcels that are part of this application, both owned by the owner and the applicant, Susan Ferris. First parcel is, last six digits are 533447. And on, on this plan, it's the I, I'll just, you know, just define it as the flag lot portion of, or the flag lot of this, of this application. This parcel has the it has, it has the residence located on it. There's the pool also located on, on it, and it, it provides, it has access from Primrose Hill Road through that narrow strip. There's, there's an existing driveway. And so, and then the second parcel, last six digits are 535440. And its parcel size is 9.111 acres. And so the reason for this lot liner alteration is Susan is proposing a building addition, which is shown on the plan. And so there's, Jim, if you zoom in a little bit where, where the house is, you can see there, there is, I, I defined it with different type of shading. There's some cross hat, hat shading where the existing residence is, and then there's an addition that's being proposed south. And that is, that is just rooms. There's no additional bedrooms that are, are being proposed. It's just a living space that's being proposed. Well, as part of this, the, the reason for this application is that building addition extends over the existing septic field, which exposed it in, all it is, is a septic tank and a sewage pit. So consequently, there's a new septic oh, and the water supply is located to the, to the north of the existing garage, right, right by the driveway. So what coincides with this application is I've had, I've done extensive work with the Dutchess County Department of Health regarding construction of a new septic system. And then also, you know, associated with that, and Health Department requires, it also includes a expansion, 100% reserve area associated with it. So the the new lot configuration takes into consideration the the, the excuse me, the locations of both the primary and the, and the expansion area. You can see that from that second drawing that Jim brought up, the current lot line for this parcel goes right through where the 100% reserve area is. And then that, that parcel A, that's, that's shown there. It's a bit of an odd configuration, but that parcel A, it allows for the construction of the primary septic system. So plans have been developed and submitted to Dutchess County Health Department. And you know, I just listened to the last application, but the, you know, had specific, and, and so David Pearson is the review engineer for the Health Department on this. And he has, you know, determined that this, these locations are, are suitable and has done an initial review, but in turn has requested that the town Rhinebeck approve the lot line alteration, map filed, and then final Health Department approval will occur on the, on the new on the new, on the new lock configuration in that filed map. I'll also note that the, you know, I, I have, you know, the area that is going to be added to the existing lot is it's about, it's 0.6848, 0.684 acres. And so, and, and so now the the new lot, and I'm calling it proposed lot number 1A, total parcel size, originally it starts at 1.99 acres, it's now 2.683 acres. And then that larger parcel that wraps around the existing parcel, that 0.64 acres is deducted from that. So now what I'm calling proposed lot number 2A is a total of 8.427 acres. So the only changes to this, to the parcel is just due to allow for a, a, a design, installation of a new septic system and also accommodate a reserve area. No other changes to the site occur. Drive, driveway access remains the same as with you know, location of the majority of the building and then just obviously the, the addition to the south.
So all we're, all that's before us is the lot line alteration.
That is correct.
That's correct, right? Jim, comments? Anything new you want to add?
No, nothing new. And I did see the letter from County Health Department from Dave requesting that the town approve the lot line change before he could go forward with, with his approval. This one is, is really a lot line adjustment, not creating a new lot, just changing the existing lot line. So I have no, no new issues, no issues with the proposal.
Okay, Delise and I did the site visit. Delise, would you like to comment?
Sure. Um, it was very straightforward. I mean, everything, as Mark explained, sort of the long-term plan, all the way up through the, through the subdivision. You know, it seems like a pretty, pretty easy to understand, and it seemed to, it seemed to make sense. I didn't see any, any issues.
I, I would concur. It's pretty straightforward. I would also add that this is one of the most spectacular views of the river. You would never know this property was chucked up there. And I understand exactly why the pool is where it is, because it looks west and you know, views to the north, views to the west, and views to the south. So I understand what she's trying to do, and I didn't see any issues with it at all. So I would open it up to comments or questions from other planning board members. If there aren't any, I would ask if there is anyone from the public present, Jim, asking to have an opportunity to speak.
If you'd like to speak, just unmute your line or raise your hand. Uh, not seeing anyone, Melody.
Okay, then I think we are at a position where we can move to close the public hearing.
I move it. We do that.
Thank you, Edna, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. The public hearing is closed and we'll move now to the approval resolution. Jim, do you want to run through it?
Sure, so, one page. Draft approval resolution, I draft approval resolution I put together for tonight for the lot line alteration, reaffirming this project is a type 200 seeker, for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Based on the information that we heard, it's consistent with objectives stated in chapter 101 subdivision of land. And with respect to the subdivision, find that is consistent with Town Code, Chapter 101, Section 101, 4.4. And but approve the application inclusive of the plan sheets prepared by Mark Graminsky dated December 12th, 2021.
Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
I move to accept, Craig.
Second. Second, Delise. I will poll the board. Delise?
Hi, sorry, hi.
That's okay. Michael?
Hi.
Sean?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The resolution is approved. Thank you, Mark. Good luck to Mr. Ferris. Okay, moving along, our third public hearing this evening, Thomas Daniels. It is eight slate dock road improvements to the property site plan and special use permit. I'm presuming Robert Murray is here with us.
Hi, Donna and Tom Daniels are here as well, and Robert, I believe you're still on.
Good, nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Good evening, board. Good evening.
Good evening. So Robert, I'd like, you know, in five or so minutes, if you can update us on where we are and what new information we have. We'll take it away.
Okay, so we visited you last on the December 6th meeting. We left that meeting. Okay, so we visited you last on the December sixth meeting. We left that meeting with some some constructive criticism and some direction for our special site at Slate Dock Road. The the direction was, let me, I guess we've come to the planning board knowing we have three variances to look for. One was the size of the house, the other is a structure in the front yard, and the third is the height of the accessory structure. Just to give you a quick recap on what we've done. The size of the house, we we reduced the program by removing program from the basement and reduce the house down to twenty five hundred and twelve square feet, which is only about nine percent more than the zoning lists. And we're hoping that is seen as a favorable action on our part to the board. Secondly, the structure in the front yard in in some ways still remains kind of the easy part. This this lot, it it's not, it's too small and it's it was subdivided long ago in such a way that there's really no place else to put a garage if you want one. So we think we've done our best to accommodate with your criticism and review and the neighbors, of course, to choose a smart location that impacts as least as reasonable and possible. The neighbor, most specifically at Forest Dock. And then lastly, the height of the structure. We looked very carefully at the numbers and we did a number of things to the garage structure to to reduce the impact and the height. The doors that will be put on the garage are standard height doors. They'll require a ceiling height in the garage of eight foot, three and a quarter. The, let's see, we've tried to, I'll call it squash down the roof so that it still permits. That's a great picture right there. So it still permits a standard sized door entrance in the side. Any lower and you can't get the door in there. So before we do anything unreasonable looking, I think we've we've pressed it down to the lowest height. So we did one other thing. First of all, I'm excited to show you the renderings we produced. When we looked at it, we decided we could move it to the south one to that's the rendering there to improve the space between the maple tree and the garage to to increase decrease the impact of the view, but increase the view for four slate dock. In the process of turning the garage or pushing it, the grade drops off there. So we actually added a couple of feet of height from the grade up to the top of the garage. I would report to you that the height is twenty seven foot, four inches. But that includes actually a four foot delta or difference between the garage slab and the grade hidden behind the bushes there. We also did not, Melody, you rec you recommended and maybe another planning board member that we consider trees and planting. And in fact, the owners want to and want very much to and expect to add more vegetation to further mask that view. That garage also was reduced from twenty five foot that we submitted earlier to twenty two feet. So we reduced it by twelve percent and moved it south ten or twelve feet. And think we've positioned it as close as we can to the house, but I might like to show you the next rendering, Jim. The board didn't ask us for this, but we thought it was quite logical that you'd say, yeah, that's great with the garage. What about the house? So we we decided to place the house. The next picture is very interesting. It shows the the existing house in the same from the same view. The existing house is actually a couple of feet taller than the new house. Why is that? Our new first floor is actually lower than the first floor of the existing house. So we we've tried to limit the height of the main house. We've reduced the size and moved the location of the garage. And we we think and hope that both the board and the neighbors appreciate these efforts. So maybe I should stop there and listen to some of your questions.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim. I think he's got some comments and then we'll entertain other comments. Jim?
Okay, so Robert, you noted that you have three variances. You're still before the ZBA. You're going to be back before them soon to get those accepted, I guess, move that forward, right? Next month or this month?
They received the same data you have where we're scheduled for next week.
Yep, okay. And so you provided.
Know and tell them whether they've accepted the application, correct?
Right, right.
That's correct.
So you provided the information that we were we're looking for about the height of the building at twenty two feet. I would like to see that number actually on your sketch. Or you're showing all the dimensions of the interior of everything. Just put put the number on there for the future. We like to have this stuff in there so we don't have to go back and guess. Someone ever comes back and asks. So as many of the dimensions you can put on there, the better, but certainly the height for both the 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 house and the the garage would be good, just so we have those on the map. But that's good. Now we know the height and you know what you're going to go to the to the ZBA with. We did get some comments from our engineer regarding, you know, rock removal and some other things. I know Robert, you sent back an email today regarding that. So we will probably work with that offline to talk with them and coordinate on that. You know, beyond that melody, I had provided some comments for the planning board that I think would generally kind of be provided by the CAB and the WAC. Just regarding things like, you know, where wetlands are ag districts, deep slopes, other natural features, scenic historic archaeological elements and the local waterfront revitalization area. You know, and with that, you know, I think it's it's fair to say that, you know, the existence of a residence on the site isn't an issue with any of those, certainly not with the LWRA. But the LWRA does talk about citing size and, you know, how a proposed new structure or new home fits into the landscape as well as any natural features changes. So those are all things for the board to consider, you know, as part of those other documents that are out there, you know, in addition to the zoning that's there with the RC overlay. But really, I have no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all right. Finish up.
As I say, I really, I really don't have any other comments. I think, you know, we've we've received a lot of the the information we've asked for. Certainly, we still have the ZBA item outstanding. So it's open to discussion now.
I do believe we also asked Robert to get some sense of what this would look like from the from the river, from across the river. Have you produced, have you produced something?
To the next rendering. So this, I actually opted to give you a few different thoughts or perspectives. This would be a boat, a pleasure boater boat that decided to come fairly close to the shore. And you can see the house colored in a in in a in a brown or beige. Next view. This is taken from from the middle of the Hudson River, believe it or not. The river is quite wide. And you really can't see it, especially with the color scheme we've chosen. We had we had initially colored it white and both Donna and Tom said, why would you do that? It stands out more. And I said, well, you can't even see it if I if I color it brown. And let's see, did I include one more picture there, Jim?
No, that was the last one. Was that one?
We we took a bunch of pictures and and actually from the middle of the river. We even took pictures from Hudson Brick Yards and and but this seemed to be the best.
So should we presume that the color rendering that you're showing here is what you've settled on?
Yes. In fact, I we also included a photo appendix and in the at the last two pages of the photo appendix, we show we show a house that was the inspiration for the color scheme.
Okay.
And then we and 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 color samples on the last the last photograph there.
Okay. And I just would like to, you know, share with you that we did not receive the comments from our new representatives at the engineering firm until after four fifteen on Friday. So I I realize that didn't get to you in a timely fashion, but there was nothing we could do to get it to you any sooner. So I presume, Robert, that you'll be speaking with them or following up with them.
Yes, thank you. We I received them actually today. And I would say, as it appears to me, I'd like to, I will contact them directly. I'll share information and we'll come back with a thorough response.
Okay. So I would like, because we obviously will be continuing this and have some time. We've been working with the remaining members of CAB. We never did receive a CAB report on this on this project. I'd like to, I'd like to ask that another site visit be scheduled to include members of the CAB. And perhaps Craig, who has joined the planning board from the CAB might have some interest in visiting the site. So Craig, I don't mean to throw you under the bus, but if you like to take the opportunity, we'd appreciate it. And other than that, I guess I would you, I'm certain you would be amenable to that. Is that?
Yeah. Yeah.
The CAB did in fact, visit during.
They did, but the person that visited went back to college and never submitted any report.
Got it.
And the other members of the CAB who have since left are not in a position to write anything. And the folks that remain have not visited the site. Because it's in the LWRP and all of those things, I think we need to touch base on that and and close that door. So I see Craig is there. Craig, is that something you'd be willing to take on from the planning board?
Yes, absolutely.
Good. So we'll, Robert will coordinate, you know, through you to arrange for that. Are there other questions or comments? I'll start with the planning board and then we'll move to members of the public. Okay, well, I'll circle back to the planning board before we get off. Jim, are there members of the public here who wish to comment?
There are, please turn on your screen or raise your hand. There's one, Mr. and Mrs. Barron's, I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, Dave Barron's for Slate Dock Road. Question with regard to, I believe it's chapter one, twenty five, sixty nine, section C five. I believe it states that the accessory building is supposed to be no greater than six hundred fifty square feet or twenty five percent of the principal structure. Does that include, so is a garage square footage and a living space? Are are those both considered square footage? Or is a garage exempt and it's it's just square footage above a living space? How does that six hundred fifty square feet work? And does this structure adhere to that? Does the accessory building adhere to that?
So if I could answer that question, the actual gross area according to the zoning code is five hundred and four square feet. The garage and and that is the measurement of the useful area inside and it excludes garage space where vehicles are parked. So in this case, it includes, it excludes the garage.
Jim or Michael, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I have, I will take a look at that tomorrow morning. See if there is indeed the distinction, I think what Robert's referring to, and oftentimes this this distinction is made between habitable or conditioned space and uninhabitable, unconditioned space.
Correct, Michael. I just took a look. I wasn't able to find it this section. And and I'll defer to Michael confirming this, you know, is acting ZA, but detach accessory dwelling unit, this was just referenced in one twenty nine, one twenty five, sixty nine E does refer to accessory dwelling unit containing a maximum of six hundred fifty square feet of habitable space. Habitable space is that condition space. It's not the garage space, but I I would defer to Michael to just confirm, take a look at the acting ZA and and get back to you. But yeah, I I think we're we're okay there. So then, Robert, I guess the question would be how, what what was the square footage of the accessory structure?
Five hundred and four square feet. It was reduced because we reduced the size of the garage.
Okay. So it appeared that it meets the code requirements, yes.
Okay, Mr. Barron's, does that answer your question?
I think so. I'm I'm still struggling with whether or not and I understand habitable and uninhabitable. I get that. But you're putting a habitable upon an uninhabitable. So isn't isn't that uninhabitable somewhat coming into play?
It's.
I I understand the difference. Like, I I get the difference, but but you're also putting the habitable on top of an uninhabitable. So it's it's kind of, it's kind of using the the uninhabitable.
Well, that's what I want to check. I mean, it's possible that the limit for the habitable space is that an accessory dwelling unit in the Rhine Cliff overlay district is restricted to six hundred and fifty square feet. The overall of square footage of accessory structures, this is what I want to check, may or may not include uninhabitable space. I don't know. And that's what I want to check just to make sure. Because I think it's possibly two things we have going here. The total square footage of an accessory structure, regardless of whether it's a garage or an accessory dwelling unit and whether or not the restriction strictly applies to habitable space accessory dwelling units. And that's what I want to check.
Okay, so feel free, Mr. Barron's, to get in touch with Michael later in the week and see what he's determined as the interim zoning administrator.
Yeah, I'll be looking at looking that up tomorrow morning when I get get to our town hall.
Michael, just a note that in fact, when you look up under definitions floor area gross, there's a note specifically saying within the RCO district, this exclusion shall not be applied to, let's see, da, 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 in in excess of that. They talk about it specifically. They note the RCO. So maybe.
That's what I want to check.
Yeah.
That's what I'm going to check, Robert, because I I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what the answer is specifically. I just want to check it out.
Thank you.
Michael, could we ask that when you share that information with Mr. Barron's, you you share it with at least Robert and he can, you know, so we have the same information?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Other members of the public, is there anyone else out there, Jim?
Mr. Branch, still have your hand raised. Did you want to speak again? No, okay. Guessing not. Not seeing anyone else, Melody.
Okay, so we will be continuing the public hearing. The question is to when, Robert, are you confident that you can answer all the engineering comments to for us to reschedule this for a month from now? Or do you need more time?
No, I'm I'm sure we can. I wanted to also note that part of our changing the program in the in the basement was to limit quite severely the amount of excavation we anticipated. So so the questions from the engineer, I did look at them. I think I can answer them clearly and cleanly. So I'd like to go for the one month from now, March seventh, is that?
I think that would be March seventh. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, if there's nothing more from the planning board, nothing more from the public. I'd I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until the March seventh meeting at six fifteen PM.
Go move.
Motion by Michael, second.
Second.
Second by Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, tensions. Okay, so folks will be in touch with you about a CAB Craig site visit and we'll take it from there and you'll be in touch with the engineers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our mercifully to our last public hearing of the evening. That is Rockledge. Four ninety two Akron Hook Road condo unit site plan approval, special use permit and wetlands permit. Mark Kraminsky, I believe, is here and maybe Mr. Blakeman as well, representing Rockledge.
Melody, I am recused from this.
Okay, let the minutes record that Edna, who has been recused from the beginning, is continuing that recusal. Thank you, Edna.
So, good evening.
Will Agresta from MDR is also here for Rockledge.
Who's speaking?
Will Agresta from Matthew D. Rudikoff, who is also here representing Rockledge.
Okay, thank you, Will. Mark, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, I am. And Jim, if you could bring up my notes, so realizing the last last public hearing of a long night through the planning board, I prepared some notes and I'll just quickly go through those. And so the one of the goals for tonight's meeting is to you know, obviously, there's a new member of the planning board, but also the planning board members that have been involved in this project since since the beginning. Just to run through, you know, project, you know, the status of the project, you know, materials that have been submitted and then also where. And then also where we are with, you know, various reports and documents and legally where we stand on the project. It's, as I said, it's a project's status and update for the board. So I'll try to go through this quickly. And that's why I provided these notes so everyone can also look at them. I'll just, you know, read from them and then paraphrase some sections. So in 2021, you know, we did, you know, substantial field investigation and concluded in water supply goals were achieved and project was reintroduced to the planning board and public. Multiple site visits as well as formal planning board meetings were conducted. The site stormwater pollution prevention plan was prepared and submitted. The town engineer, C P L, provided formal comments regarding the project comments, addressed the roadway, water supply, wastewater, traffic, and stormwater pollution prevention plan. And then following that, a special meeting was conducted on July 29th, 2021, and C P L comments were formally reviewed with the board. The approach to providing additional information was also discussed. So since that time, ownership and the project team have been working to prepare necessary documentation required to formally and completely respond to all technical comments. This requires coordination between multiple consultants, state and local interagency review coordination, as well as development of legal agreements, documentation and documentation. Recent changes in the office of the town engineer have also required coordination for site visits and project updates. And with the coordination between the consultants and agencies requiring flexible and evolving timelines, details for water supply, wastewater and stormwater pollution prevention plan are currently being developed. In an effort to organize the submission, it is preferred to provide a complete response with additional documents and details in a single submission. And this will be provided as soon as they are completed. The exception to this is most publicly commented aspect of, which is traffic. Response to C P L and some of the public comments were included in a current submission. And that current submission provided multiple documents to the planning board. And, and so just, Jim, if you could go to my second page, and I won't go through them all. Here's, these are all the documents that have been provided to the planning board and its, its planning consultant. And they are the engineering, engineering drawings and documents from this office. Their architectural drawings that were, you know, submitted to the National Park Service from the project architect. And then there are also drawings from the landscape architect that have been, that have also been submitted to the town. All current, all current drawings to date, and they are, they are on file with the town. In addition to that, from, from Matt Rudicoff's office, there's documents, all the applications, subdivic, application, special permit application, site plan application, wetland application. And then all the, you know, environmental documents associated with the, the E F, E A F part one have, have also been included, traffic, multiple traffic documents and an updated traffic analysis has been provided to the town. And then also ag data statement. And then in addition to that, archaeological investigation was completed by Harken Archaeological Associates. And that was back in March, March 2020. And then I, I did mention that the traffic analysis was updated from, from the original. And so that information is the original analysis. And so that, that information is available. And then also cultural landscape approach based on our meeting, we had a site meeting with Charles Bernbaum. And that approach has been submitted along with rationale for native landscaping associated with the cultural landscape report. Third on there is just recent changes, as I mentioned before, to the town engineer have required coordination and site visits and project updates, comments associated with the SWIP in the C P L review letter have been and currently being addressed. The updated document with additional details requested by C P L and formal response to C P L comments on the SWIP will be provided as part of a single and complete submission, addressing all the technical details they've outlined. One of the made, you know, items that C P L also requested that we've been aggressively working on are the water and sewer systems for the project. So and the process of formal engagement of Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to operate water supply and wastewater treatment systems for the development is being pursued on two, two tracks. And so I mentioned this before, it's both legal and engineering. Last week, we had a pre-submission meeting that had the Duchess County Department of Health, Water and Wastewater Authority, and the Rockledge Project Team and, and discussing both, you know, preparation of the required documents for water supply and sewage collection and sewage treatment. And, and arranging a site visit with all the involved agencies and town engineer to, you know, for, for, to take a look at the site. And then regarding, I did mention legal track, so legal track, we're pursuing a draft memorandum of, of understanding, which will outline the operating agreement with the site owner and Water and Wastewater Authority. Been involved with multiple meetings with Water and Wastewater Authority with Rockledge Council, Victoria, Paula Doro. And so that is, that is ongoing and, and it's actually moving towards completion. Let's see, so I guess, you know, in summary, it's, you know, the same time that we're pursuing this, this, you know, legal, you know, obtaining the legal documents for Water and Wastewater Authority to, to operate a water supply and wastewater treatment systems. The engineering track, we're moving in three stages. And so those three stages are detailing and evaluating the existing conditions, reporting on existing conditions and recommendations for upgrades. And then obviously, once that's done, it leads to final design for detail for permitting. And so the Water and Wastewater Authority, New York State Department of Health, Duchess County Department of Health, New York State D E C, they're the interested and involved agencies which are currently reviewing the materials for each stage of development. And so with this project, we're, we're in the, we're in the process of developing, you know, stages one, two, all, all three stages. But I, I feel that once stage one and two, which are the documents originally requested by C P L, so that the town can move forward with the secret process. Those are, those are at the forefront and we're working to have those documents completed. So that is, you know, finalization of the stormwater pollution prevent, prevention plan. And then engineering reports regarding water supply and wastewater collection and, and treatment. And then I just also note again that the, you know, just the, you know, since there's been, you know, a lot of attention paid to the traffic, just once again referencing, you know, the work that was done by Creighton Manning Engineering for the traffic analysis as, as, as early as July of 2021. And so the, that new information is also noted and has been submitted to, to the planning board. And then also condominium association, a draft condominium association document is being prepared and reviewed. Once the draft document will be provided as part of the single and complete submission, also with our other engineering and legal documents. And then I just finish up by saying, you know, with regard to seeker, once the above noted documents, plans and details have been completed, they will be provided as part of a single submission. And we're looking that they require all the information so that the town can move forward to make a, make a secret determination for this project. And so that we can, also it's, I mean, it's twofold to, to move towards approval. But what I'll also mention is there's been an ongoing, I think everyone's aware of it, an ongoing application with the Z B A with regard to just real, reallocation of some of the condominium units regarding the, you know, historic structures. And so just to, to allow for additional condominium units in the larger historic structure, we need to go back to the Z B A to finalize that. And so in order to do that, we need to, you know, complete the secret process with the town planning board. So that's just, I tried to keep it brief and just summarize, you know, the goals for the, for the project team for this evening. Just once again, update the planning board where, where we are progressing and we're moving aggressively to, to get all these documents to the town to, to keep the project, keep the project moving.
Thank you, Mark. I think that's a very comprehensive review of everything that's taken place. I would say that this has been submitted to the planning board and is a public document. So it's available for people who are interested in obtaining it and having a chance to go over it. And I thank you for all the work to bring us up to speed. Is there anybody else from your team who would like to make any comments at this time? Okay. Jim, is there anything you'd like to offer at this point?
Well, Charlie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess I do.
Okay.
You know, I wasn't going to, but I was just been.
I know we all know you, but perhaps you might want to introduce yourself.
I'm Charles Blakeman, the developer, and I've been on this project, I think, for like almost 10 years already at this point. And, you know, the, I just want to say for the record, because a lot of stuff is going around outside of this meeting. And, you know, there was an original plan which we were going to do, do an inn and some condominiums. And that was a long time ago. And at the time, you know, our neighbors were concerned about traffic and parties and weddings going on in an inn. And, you know, at that time, many years ago, I heard them and I decided to change course and make this a total condominium project because I, I knew that, you know, the neighborhood wasn't for it. And I've been trying to work on that with the town all these years and sort of taking the guidance from everybody. And that's how we came up with our design. And, you know, all in good faith and all trying to do the right project. And, you know, I, I just, you know, there were some petition put out there recently, you know, where a lot of people were signing up for something that had a lot of misinformation and, you know, and it was really disheartening to me that, you know, it's one thing to have real concrete opinions about things or, you know, things that, you know, ask questions that, how is this going to affect our neighborhood and all that? And I totally understand that. But I was really upset that, you know, all this kind of misinformation was on this petition. And it was made in a way that, you know, I would have signed it because it said, you know, save Rhinebeck's beautiful historic, you know, rural atmosphere. Yeah, I would do that without reading the whole thing. But really it was about knocking our project down. And I just want to say that, you know, I love this town, you know, I think the reason I came here was because I've been coming up here for, you know, 40 years and my kids went to school in Bard and, you know, I'm real, done a lot of community work in Kingston. And I fell in love with these, this historic property, which actually takes a lot of money to restore these buildings. It's not, it's, it's probably as much money as you can, you know, muster to make this work with selling condominiums. And, you know, it's, it's, it's been a, as much as a financial thing, it's been a work of love, you know, to try to get this done. And I just wanted to go on record to saying that it's, it's, I'm open to all kinds of things that are real and to have those discussions with people, want to have real discussion, but let's not get carried away with things that are not true. Sorry if I took too much time, but I know it's late and I just needed to get that off my chest. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Jim, is there anything new you'd like to add or do you want to move to planning board comments and then the public?
No, I, I don't have any new comments. You know, this was an update day. I, I was actually going to reiterate what, what Charlie said, which is just to let everyone know that this project has been going on for a while. It's been in front of the planning board for several years and did change focus, you know, from the country in one to all residential units. In no small part because of the public input at the time, which is right around the time that I started working with the town of Rhinebeck several years ago. So, you know, we need to keep in mind that we have been working on this for, for quite a while, you know, over the years. But no, I have no, 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 no new information or questions at this time.
All right, if there, I'd move now to the planning board and if anyone has questions or comments, I'll entertain them. But other than that, I think we're ready to move into the public hearing component of it. I'm assuming there are members of the public here who would like to comment, but I'd first offer the chance to planning board members. If not, we can move on. Well, I, I assure you, we will have other opportunities to hear from planning board members as well. So if there isn't anything pressing, Jim, I think we can move to comments from the public. And as Jim has indicated, if you can figure out how to raise your hand, raise your hand and Jim will take responsibility for admitting you. And I will just remind you, oh, thank you, Jim. Here's the format we're following for public comments. So, Jim, I'll turn it over to you to manage this component of the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Melody. So if you would like to speak, please either raise your hand using the tool in Zoom or you can turn on your screen. Please still remain muted and we will start the discussion.
Jim, can we go back to the format of having people on the screen? I think if everybody commits to sticking to the public comment, I, I think it's much more accessible to be able to see people as they're speaking all at the same time. Are we, is there anyone here?
Yes, I actually raised my hand. It's Kara. Do you want, I don't know if you can see that?
I see it now.
So I don't actually have a particular comment this evening because we were led to believe that this is really just going to be yet another continuation of the public hearing. And I would like to say that I, I really appreciate Mr. Blakeman's comment. And I do feel that your intention is to build something that is, in your view, appropriate to the neighborhood. I will point out that twice, there were two attempts at building something that was not in keeping with the neighborhood. And before you came up with a purely residential plan, and for that, we're, we're really pleased. But I resent a little bit that, more than a little bit, the implication that the public has held up this development and dragged things out. So I look forward to being able to work together going forward and, and reaching a, a, a good conclusion for everybody. But, but we've, we've all been in this together to this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Kara. Thank you, Kara.
Edna and Gary, did you have a comment?
Oh, yes, here we are. Carrie and I are at 20 Hegarty Hill Rover, right next to Rockledge. And we would like, we have a number of comments to make that have to do with what Mr. Blakeman mentioned a while ago. A concern that we have is we have a number of comments to make that require some information and some evidence. And we're trying the best we can, but we don't think that we can keep this to five minutes. You know, we'll, we could try to keep it. You know, we'll we could try to keep it to ten. And I wonder, Melody, if uh I don't know if you want to take a vote of the board to give us a little more time, because these are comments that have not been heard before by the board.
Well, we'll do the best we can with you. Edna, um I believe you're submitting your comments in writing. Is that correct?
We will submit them in writing, yes. Um and there there are exhibits in charge and so forth with our comments. But I really think that uh it's important that our comments be heard publicly. So we we really would like to have just a little more time than five minutes.
All right, I'll defer to my colleagues on the planning board. Um.
I'd like to hear what Edna and Gary have to say myself. New information, then hopefully that will be helpful to moving this along for all concerned.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we do the first five minutes and see how far along they are? And how you wait, how much longer they need, just to be fair to all everyone in the public, if they have more, let's hear it.
All right, well, let's begin with under understanding you understand my dilemma is that once I allow you additional time, you know, I I must consider the same request of others. So let's jump in and not waste any more time projecting how long this might take. Here we go.
Okay, I um as Edna said, we're going to be forwarding in writing specific challenges to eight of the claims that were made in this petition that has been circulating in the town. In the interest of time, I'm going to restrict my comments tonight to five of those claims, all of which represent serious misunderstandings and misinterpretations of both the comprehensive plan for Rhinebeck and of the zoning law. I think it's unfortunate that that petition was issued. It it contains a great deal of misinformation. I think it's harmful to the town. And as Edna pointed out, we think this is something that needs to be restock responded to in a public forum. Um, the first claim is that the petition says that Rockledge would quote permanently alter and disturb this special rural area of Rhinebeck, close quote, and that the comprehension comprehensive plan quote acknowledged this farmland area is a vital scenic and intentionally low density rural area of Rhinebeck. People might be surprised to learn that most of our neighborhood has higher density than what is proposed for the Rockledge development. We looked at the size of parcels along nine roads in the neighborhood, including Ackert Hook, Burger, Fly and Hagerty Hill, using Duchess County parcel access. Rockledge is proposing thirty-six homes on one hundred and thirty-five acres, including the eight units to be built in the two restored historic buildings. This amounts to an average of three and three quarters acres per residence. Of the nine rows we surveyed, there are a total of two hundred and four lots. Sixty-four percent are smaller than this three point seven five acres. Seventy-three percent are under five acres and the median lot size is three acres. This makes clear that our neighborhood is not the low density farmland area that the petition claims. The reason is that most of the land in the neighborhood was subdivided into small lots before the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan and before the area was incorporated in the RC five district. A stated objective of the comprehensive plan was to avoid sprawl by filling in existing pockets of higher density in the district like this one. This filling in on one of the few unused parcels in the neighborhood is what the proposed Rockledge development would do. Despite the fact that most of the lots in our neighborhood are well under five acres, the area is very beautiful. Mix of woodlands and rock outcrops and wetlands and so on, much of it visible from the road. So the question is, is the scenic character of our neighborhood threatened by a future onslaught of increasing density? And we believe the answer is no for a couple of reasons. A significant increase in density is limited by the availability of vacant parcels. Of the nine roads we surveyed, we counted nineteen vacant parcels, of which eleven are too small for subdivision. Of the remaining eight, one has a conservation easement and two still shown on parcel access as vacant have houses either planned or under construction. That leaves only five vacant subdividable land parcels. So there just isn't all that much room for extensive further development. But one of the biggest reasons for the rural feel of the neighborhood is that due to the Winicky Land Trust and eight property owners who've granted conservation easements that limit development on their land. We've got a map that shows how these preserved parcels dominate the land.
I'm going to try to show this. You, when you um get the printed copy of this, you you will be able to see this map. But the point is all of those white areas are either Winicky preserves or conserve land, land with conservation easements right in our neighborhood. Um, and of course, the three preserves are open to the public to to enjoy.
So the second claim is the petition states that Rockledge will quote undermine the conservation and other tenants of the comprehensive plan. Here we've got a lot of application materials to look at. And the development has in fact been designed to meet all of the land use recommendations of the comprehensive plan, including preservation of scenic and natural resources. The historic stone buildings will be preserved, adapting them for residential use as the comprehensive plan suggests. The woodlands and meadows around them will be unchanged, echoing the original amp landscape as this plan suggests. And the new buildings will be clustered on an open meadow away from the historic structures and away from the wooded slopes nearby. This will limit the removal of trees, preserve open space, maintain the natural contours of the land, the kind of smart development proposed by the comprehensive plan. The building envelopes will occupy only a small portion of the land. The remaining acreage will remain undeveloped. Much of it adjoins our own two hundred and seventy-two acre parcel, which is protected by a conservation easement. We'd like to encourage Rockledge to place a conservation easement on the undeveloped portion of their land. This would enlarge the preserved wildlife habitat in the neighborhood and fulfill yet another goal of the comprehensive plan. Wetlands and their buffers will be fully protected, must be protected from construction activity. They plan to conserve water through plantings of naval of native species with low water demand. And we've already seen the storm containment containment that has been designed to uh improve the uh the the replenishment of groundwater. And all of the residences are will be sited away from the road so that the current views of meadows and wo- woodlands will be unchanged after the development. Again, this meets the comprehensive plan's objective to preserve rural view sheds along road uh roadways. The petition says the historic structures at Rockledge will be degraded by the plan to monetize them into condos and demands that the owner maintain the historic buildings as originally intended. This ignores the explicit recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The plan stresses that Rhinebeck's historic buildings are crucial to the unique character of the town and lists the buildings at Rockledge among those to be preserved. It states, allow adaptive reuse of historic structures to help preserve them by permitting such a range of uses as multifamily housing, bed and breakfasts, and tourist guesthouse operations. The word multi in multifamily means, of course, more than one resident per structure. There's no suggestion that historic buildings be maintained as they were originally used. Historic structures that aren't preserved and occupied fall into misuse and ruin. While Rockledge was vacant, somebody ripped out all the copper pipes from the building. When we bought our land next to Rockledge, the stone barn on our property had been used for partying by teenagers for generations. And at some point, somebody cut all the the chestnut support beams out from the roof and that entire glorious slate roof collapsed into the interior of the building. But it didn't take the stone walls with it. It's a credit to the stonemasons of a hundred years ago. It would be a tragedy if something like that happened at Rockledge. Next claim. The petition claims that Rockledge is quote seeking a significant variance from the RC five five acre slash one home zoning. This is just plain false. There is one variance application and it has nothing to do with five acres or with density in general. It merely dealt with the location of two of the eight residential units permitted by the zoning law for adaptive reuse of two historic structures. Because of the large size of the manor house, they wanted to put six units there, leaving only two for the smaller stone barn. Another claim. The petition asserts that the comprehensive plan and zoning law permit no more than one home per five acres. Again, this is outright false. Nowhere in the comprehensive plan is one home per five acres cited as an objective for the RC five district. The plan proposes a minimum lot size of five acres, but makes no mention about how many homes should be permitted on a lot. In fact, the plan recommends that accessory dwellings should be permitted. And this suggestion was incorporated into the zoning law. So the owner of a five acre acre lot or a smaller grandfathered lot could construct or an accessory dwelling and rent it to a separate family so long as the owner also lives on the property, resulting in two homes on five acres. The comprehensive plan makes no recommendations regarding lot sizes or density for multifamily developments, nor does it suggest that they be excluded from RC five. In fact, the plan stresses multiple times in the chapter on housing that it's that Rhinebeck must meet the diverse needs for housing of all of its residents. That is going to include people who, for whatever reason, can't maintain a single family house. Sorry, I'm skipping around here a little bit.
How are we doing? I know we're a little over on time. Is everybody satisfied to let Gary and Edna wrap up here?
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
So Melody, I did have, I did have one participant in the meeting here say, well, there are two of them, so that should be ten minutes, five of each.
All right, well, then let's let's not interrupt them and let them finish up. So, okay, I'm.
And at this time, at this time, we only seem to have one other speaker, possibly two. So um, so I think we're doing fine on time.
Continue then, please.
Okay, okay. Uh, the next, the petition claims that the Rockledge development would damage the roads eh in the neighborhood through overuse and dangerous traffic density. This is another claim that's pretty light on evidence. Still, having a safe place to walk is a reasonable desire. We don't have sidewalks in the neighborhood and and frankly, we probably don't want to have them. But it would be very nice to have easy access to some nice walking trails. Rockledge previously explored the possibility of creating a trail on the shoulder of the road along their property's frontage on Ackert Hook. This was deemed unworkable because of high banks and trees on the shoulder. Uh last fall, Edna and I walked uh the property frontage as well as the frontage on our own land that adjoins it. And it was pretty obvious that having a trail right along the road wasn't practical. But it looked to us like a trail could be constructed as long as it was thirty to fifty feet inside the property, but again, paralleling the road. And that applies both to uh the Rockledge property and to our own property. So we started to think about where a tri- trail like that might go. Ideally, this trail could provide a shortcut from Ackert Hook Road to Winicky's Y Preserve. If you haven't been there, it's beautiful. It's interesting land. It's got lots of wildlife. It's got a good trail system along the wetland. And you can bring your dogs if you keep them leashed. To get to the preserve, the trail would have to cross Ackert Hook Road, continue east through one of the Ackert Hook properties opposite our land and one of the adjacent properties on a fly on Fly Road, a total of four properties. The trail would then end on Fly Road, close to the entrance to the preserve. If Rockledge was willing to allow this kind of trail, we would be willing to consider allowing it to continue on our property as well. But several things would have to happen to make this thing a reality. First, we'd need two additional neighbors, one on Ackert Hook and one on Fly Road to concept to a trail of a trail on their property. Uh perhaps a lot line where it could be couldn't be seen from the residence. We'd need a volunteer group of neighbors who would help construct and then maintain and monitor the trail. And finally, a land trust such as, for instance, Winicky who would be needed to accept the trail easements on all four properties and help design and supervise the construction of the trail. So if Rockledge is receptive to this and if neighbors are willing to put in the effort and work together, we might be able to make this happen and have an acceptable substitute to Ackert Hook Road as a neighborhood hiking trail. Thank you for your attention.
I think you. The the trail like that, I think, would be a real feather in the cap of our neighborhood. And an example of something that that we could do together, you know, something positive that helps fill the needs of neighbors. So we would love to work on it with a group of neighbors and Rockledge if they were willing. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Edna and Gary, and thank you for working so hard to get it all in. Um obviously, a lot of time and effort into it. Jim, I'll turn it back to you to manage other public comments. I see Charlie's got a hand up, Patty Langco. Uh, where's my buddy Jim? Where'd he go? There he is.
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh Charlie, do you have a comment or did you want to make a comment to the Lockmans?
Just quickly, uh, you know, uh, I I first of all, I I didn't mean to say that the neighbors stopped delayed my project at all. That's not what my intention was to say. Second of all, uh, I would definitely be open to the conservation idea and the trail, you know, I would definitely work together to try to make that happen. That's all.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, next is Patty.
Hi, I um, so I just wanted to point out that I came um totally not expecting to have any presentation about the Rockledge project. Tonight, I thought that this would just be a continued um public hearing, so I'm hoping that that will happen because I I didn't see any documents um put out on the planning board web. So um, and then I just wanted, um given um the the things that Mark talked about, I wanted to point out that the thing that I really am concerned about is the Fallsburg Creek as a um target for the affluent from wastewater. And I am really looking forward to seeing plans about that and that um I um I didn't see a mention of the Speedy's permit, so I'm assuming that a new Speedy's permit will be required. And so um I'm looking forward to seeing those documents. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Patty.
Right, and Wendy Maitland.
Hi, I I'm a resident of, oh, am I on mute? Wait.
No, you're not.
We can hear you.
Uh, I'm a resident of Rhinebeck and I was born and raised in Rhinebeck. And I just wanted to note uh per the man and his wife who were speaking, and I'm sorry because I don't recall their names, but um I was uh provided, presented with this petition. And it was presented with me to me on a one page, with a one page cover and a rushed uh urgency to sign it, which I did by accident because it said, do you want to keep Rhinebeck beautiful or something along those lines? And of course, I want to keep Rhinebeck beautiful, but I just want to note that because as the planning board, I'm sure that you're getting pressure uh or not pressure, but you know, feedback on how many people have signed the petition. And I wonder how many people who've actually signed that petition actually know what it's referring to. Because what I signed was about keeping America, uh, America, keeping Rhinebeck beautiful and not increasing the traffic by over fifty percent in the town. So uh that was sort of a, you know, mischaracterization of this project, in my opinion. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Wendy.
I I don't have anyone else on the list. So if anyone else would like to make a comment.
Anyone from the planning board wishing to make a comment? All right, um. All right, Mark, I guess we'll ask you, where do you think you are in the timeline and when would you like to continue the public hearing too?
Let's see. Well, we will not have engineering reports available for the next meeting. That's, that's for sure. So I think the following meeting, Melody.
So we'd be looking at the April meeting, is that correct?
I'm just grabbing the schedule right now. So yeah, so it would be the April 4th meeting, is that correct?
Okay. I may also say that, as you've heard previously, a couple of times in the meeting tonight, we have new engineers working with us from CPL and we have been working to find a time that we can get those new engineers out in the field and orient them to the project in terms of a site visit. So that will give us ample time, Mark, to get that accomplished. So is that acceptable to everybody on the planning board if we push this out till the April meeting?
Sounds good.
Could I, could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing until April, whatever? I keep forgetting. A motion by Delise, could I have a second?
Second, Craig.
Thank you, Craig. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed, any extensions? Okay, Mark, Charlie. We will see you all in April, if not before, on a site visit. Thank you. And as you heard earlier, Mark's, Mark's written, Mark's, Mark's written remarks and Edna and Gary's presentation will be available through the office. I'm sure many of you will want to get a hold of that and have a chance to look at it. So that being said, Jim, do we have one thing left from? We have a referral? Yep, do you want to present that?
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim.
So we should probably point out Edna's now back officially in the meeting.
Okay.
Since she recused herself from Rockledge. So what we have in front of us today from the ZBA is T Court Phase Three variance request. This is related to the proposal that we looked at earlier today, but it is not that phase. It's not 2B. This is Phase Three. This one is for area variances for height of an accessory structure exceeding 20 feet, which is the treehouse behind the tee house. As well as location variances for the placement of structures in front of the principal building, which would be the tee house. So Phase Three, if you remember, has some, it's going to have structures for the train. It's also going to have some structures up around the utility area. If you were on the site visit, that's up close to Fern Cliff. All these structures are in front of the principal building, which is tee house because, you know, tee house is located right at the edge, you know, next to the river. None of these, I don't believe you'd be able to see from the street. You might be able to see them from Fern Cliff, but otherwise you really only see them if you're the property owner on the property owner's property. So I don't see any issues with those. So my draft referral response was kind of our typical response that the variances themselves don't raise any significant planning or environmental concerns and ZBA should consider the shut section of the code, input of property, neighboring property owners and HAPAC.
Any comments, questions from the planning board? All right, I entertain a motion as in the draft referral response.
So moved, Edna.
Second by Edna, second by Delise. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, any extensions? Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to thank you all for your attention tonight. We are moving into a period of time when we're getting a lot of complex applications. I encourage you all to go back and look at them and spend some time looking at what Jim prepares for us in his memos. And we'll look forward to seeing you in the next few weeks. So could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Excuse me, adjourn the meeting. It's been a long day. Could I have that motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Delise.
Thanks, Delise, a second. Thank you, Edna. All those in favor? Any opposed? I hope not. All right, the motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone, and thanks for all your hard work.
Good night.